All right, let's get this show on the road. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Work Session for Monday, September 30th, 2024. The time is 10 o'clock. And for those of you who may not know, council work sessions are held on the first and third Mondays of each month, generally. And at the council work sessions, it's a time for council and staff to get together and talk about upcoming issues, projects, ordinances, any legislative matters that might come before us. So this is where we get a lot of our work done in talking about these issues and potential problems that we might face in the future. We do not take public comment at our work sessions. We do obviously take public comment at our regularly scheduled meetings, but the work session is really a time for staff and council to interact and be briefed on upcoming events and matters. So with that being said, I will move into item number one, and this would be a Planning Commission Alternate Applicant Interview with Mr. Bryce Gaber. Would you come forward, please, sir? That'll be fine. And make sure your microphone is turned on, please. And welcome, and we appreciate your being here, and we appreciate your willingness to serve. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself, please?
Sure. Thank you, council. Yeah, thanks for having me today. My name is Bryce Gaber. I was born in this city 32 years ago. Since then, about the last five years, I've been traveling around the world abroad. The last two in Brazil, where I met my partner Maria. We decided to move back here to Montrose, and I'm currently working as a project manager for Striker Construction, and just trying to dig into my community a little bit. I have an education in architecture, urban design and planning, and both my parents are pretty involved in the community as teachers for over 30 years, and have impressed upon me the importance of that, and I think this might be a space I can contribute.
Great. Thank you very much. Council, questions, comments? Go ahead, Doug.
So we saw your application and your resume, so tell us a little bit about what your history in Montrose, how you feel that you can connect with kind of the way that the Plan Commission operates in Montrose.
Sure. Well, to be honest, I'm interested in finding out exactly how the Plan Commission operates in Montrose. The special thing about me going abroad and being accepted to these other communities, and then coming back is I feel a sense of ownership here, and I realize how special this place is. I grew up with this web of 30 other teachers' kids, and
Poor guy.
This is a web of support that is, I think, really special and unique. And so, yeah, I just, I see the city with an outstanding review, and I want to be a part of it.
Doug, go ahead.
Did you, you said you worked in construction?
Yes, sir.
Do you feel that that could be any kind of a conflict between being on this and your profession?
I don't know the answer to that, because I don't know exactly what I'll be up to. So, you know, all I can say is I think being on the board, you're not supposed to make it a personal thing in any way. I think it's a service to the community with outstanding obligations aside. So that's my intention, but I'm not sure exactly how it interferes.
Judy Ann, do you have anything?
Maybe I do have a comment. I've known your family for so long that it's kind of interesting to have you come back into our lives. So thank you for coming back to Montrose.
Thank you. I feel really welcome, and my partner really feels welcome.
Good. It'll be nice to meet her.
Mr. Yulberry?
I only had one question, and Doug asked it, and that was dealing with working for the construction company and being impartial or a conflict of interest. So, and I think you answered it quite well.
Would you, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you for your time.
Well, thank, thank you for your, for coming this morning, and thank you for your interest, and we'll look forward to working with you. Thank you. Moving right on to the Historic Preservation Commission applicant interviews, and we have Mr. John Horn and Ms. Danielle Gott. Come, come forward, please. Good morning. Thank you both for coming. Mr. Horn, let's start with you and have you tell us a little bit about yourself, your experiences, and take a thing, please.
I moved to Montrose in 1984, worked for Nickens and Associates, which is a cultural resource consulting company, and then we started Alpine Archaeology in 1987. And so I've been doing history and archaeology in, well, most of the western states, based out of Montrose since then. I have a degree in history and anthropology, focusing kind of on historical archaeology. And I've been on the Historic Preservation Commission. This will be my, this will be my third term, and help, for a turn, kind of get it up and running. So it's been, it's been a fun commission to work on. We've designated quite a few buildings. We're moving forward with Tortilla Flats designation, and I'm hoping that we can do more with getting more buildings designated and getting into downtown some kind of a national register designation, so they can benefit from tax credits and grants potentially.
Well, thank you. And I think I speak for the entire council when I say thank you for you, both of you, for your service and what the commission is doing, and you just have to look around town and see how active you guys have been. So that's, that's great. Could we hear from you, Ms. Scott?
No, sure. I moved to Montrose five years ago. I'm a retired architect from Jennings, Arizona. Practiced there for 30-plus years. I moved here because my sister and brother-in-law bought a lot outside the town, and I designed and built that forum and decided to stay because I like it here. And history has always been an interest to me, especially architectural history. I love old buildings. I grew up, my father was in the military, so I grew up a lot overseas, and just the, the architecture there is just wonderful. And I just, I like to know the history of buildings. I think buildings, architecture, shape who we are as a past and as a future. And I just, this would be my, I think, my second and a half term. I came in halfway through one person's term, so my second and a half term. So I enjoy it, and hopefully I'll continue to enjoy it.
Thank you very much, and I can, can tell from both that you really have a passion for this, and that's wonderful. We thank you. Council, questions, comments?
Well, the only comment I had was, Mr. Horn, I'm kind of curious if you're going to get a publishing company to publish your resume, because that, that's like a novel, I gotta just tell you. It's really exciting. No, I just really, I'm really grateful that you guys are going to continue on in the role that you've already assumed, and that your enthusiasm for this actually translates a lot to our community. And it's really helping us to make a vibrant and historical designations, help make our community a little bit more on the map as far as where our other designations go. So I just want to thank you for all of your hard work and service.
They told me if I had a foundation, I could become a historic spot.
Stay in one spot long enough.
You otherwise qualify, right?
The only question I have is, or comment, was that you did sign the, was it the conflict or the saying that you had the property on Main Street, 312, and that there wouldn't be a conflict of interest, being that it's a possible historical building?
And the way, the way it works is if we have an interest in a property or something that comes before us, we always recuse ourselves from that. You know, we can provide information but not vote on that or try to sway the vote.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted you to affirm that, that
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's the same rules that we live by.
Yeah, and it's difficult with the other boards that are going on.
Right. Judy Ann, anything?
I just really appreciate both of you for the service you've already given the city, and for your desire to come back and continue to do more. Thank you. You must enjoy it.
I'm with you.
Well, yes, thanks to both of you, and you've done a great job, and there's a lot more projects out there, so we'll look forward to working with you and having you serve the city. And again, thank you very much for being here. Okay, we will move into the first of the discussion items. That would be item 3A, Cerise Park Command Center Authorization. Police Chief Blaine Hall and Facility Manager Mark Armstrong. Chief?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Yes, today I come before you to discuss funding for improving the Cerise Park shed that is currently used by the Police Department for storage, storage of our electric mountain bikes, and at times also storage for our side-by-side. It's split with a wall, and then the other side is used for events, so it stores like the fencing and, and things like that. Currently, the building is just a shed, so it's exterior wall with studs and a concrete floor. It is secured, alarmed, camered. As we move forward with events in Cerise, I spoke with Jim Shide here probably about three weeks ago, and these events, Tracy Byrd was kind of one of those eye-openers for me. Are going to get larger. I think Montrose has definitely been discovered for these types of events, which I think is a good thing. But I know in working these events, especially right at the end, we sometimes have disturbances. We have parents who have lost their kids, things like that. God forbid there come a day that we have a more serious event there in the park. And so Jim and I were speaking, and it would be beneficial to upgrade that shed and do some work to it. In other words, insulate it, drywall it, heat it and cool it, so that we could, if needed, be able to use both sides as a command center if we have a situation that goes really past even half of one operational cycle. And so what we normally do is we run those events out of the Police Department, because we have that ability to upstairs. But if an event goes longer, and we really need that command presence and those boots on the ground, we would use one side for command and control and operations, and the other side we would use for equipping, having officers come in either out of the heat or out of the cold, rest, and then go back out. And then our Police Department EOC, and I have Paul Eller here today, if you have any questions for Paul as far as what an EOC looks like, would really turn into a proper EOC, and Paul would be managing that, looking at the next operational cycle as far as what we would need. And so we'd like to start work on it this year in preparation to have it finished, hopefully in the spring of next year, before event season comes around. And so we would be spending money this year, if allowed, and this was an unbudgeted item this year. It is in the 2025 budget, as you probably saw, but we would like to start getting to work on it here this year. Jim's not here. We would use our on-call contract, and our city staff wouldn't be doing all of the work, but possibly some of the work in conjunction with the individual or the group or company that is our on-call contracted person. And Mark, do you have any comments?
No, that, that contractor, Striker and Company, we have an on-call general construction services agreement with them that we'd be trying to utilize for this project.
So
Go ahead.
We'd be looking, talking with Jim, we'd probably be looking at spending about $35,000 this year for the work and then finishing it next year. There is a built-in contingency into that $75,000 already. I think the actual work, it's estimated to be right around $68,000 to complete.
It seems to me that the need for this really, it's pretty positive, because it speaks really well for things that are happening in this community, and we wouldn't need to do that if things weren't progressing and growing and providing more opportunities for both our visitors and our citizens. So I think it's something that we need to seriously move on personally. I'd like comments from council.
I'd like to just make sure that when we're doing this, that, that it is set up with communications. That's important for you guys. Also, to make the building just a little bit more secure. I'm not sure what the construction type is like, but I'd like to make sure that, that if we're going to have this as a permanent, say, command center, that, that it's actually is a command center.
You bet.
With communications and safety and all the, it has my support.
Okay, so, yeah, no, I appreciate that. We would work with Greg and our FirstNet folks to get a mobile FirstNet hotspot out of the building. I've already spoken with Juan. We'd be able to do drone operations. It is currently alarmed and camered already, and so it is pretty secure. It's got electronic locks, all of that stuff. So we'd be more looking towards just the heating, cooling, insulation.
But just to, to be clear for the record, Ed, what we're talking about now is only facilities. We're not talking about any equipment, but this is just for the building itself.
No, I understand, but sometimes When you're building, fixing up and proving that there are some equipment that is necessary to be installed prior to any other, and I just want to make sure that if we're making it a command center, that it has the necessary electrical, plumbing, internet, that sort of stuff in the building before it's covered up or whatever, just for
That particular building would not have any plumbing in it. It was not originally constructed with any plumbing, but as part of the construction scope, it would increase the security of the building itself. It was originally constructed as a pole barn structure, so all of the area in between the posts or poles of that building would be framed in, sheathed with OSB. That's both the walls and the lid on the trusses as well. So within doing that, you would create a more secure space while providing those cavities for insulation.
And I would agree with Mr. Yulberry that one of the things, I made a lot of money remodeling buildings that people didn't think in advance of adding electrical or the Cat Five cables or anything. So making sure we're thinking in advance of that. I, I agree with that, making sure we have that in our mind, that the future use, making sure that we're ahead of that, I think is a valuable thing, too.
Yes, sir. And, and those, those aspects are part of the scope of work. We are going to be upgrading the electrical service, making sure that we have the, the communications and data cabling that we need as well, so.
Yeah, I think that's a, with the number of activities that we have, and what we seem to be growing in that respect, to the number of activities and the size of the crowds, I think that's an excellent, excellent thing to do.
But currently, the building's being used for storage, correct?
Correct.
What's going to happen to whatever's stored in there?
Yeah.
Are we going to have to build a storage shed now?
No, I don't think so. So if we, in the event that we have to use the, the events side, which has some of those fences and things like that, we'd just move them out and put them on the side of the building, take over that portion of it until that incident is over with, and then put the stuff back in. So it's just a single-use kind of situation. We wouldn't be using it 24/7.
Yeah, it's an event response space, not a
Correct.
A permanent command center.
You know, there might be another time where we may have someone missing in the park, or something along those lines, where it's not event-related, where we might end up using it. But again, we, we would just move those items outside and then move them back in when they were done.
Are you saying you have manual labor on your staff?
We got a few folks that can do it.
I want to take a picture of you out there.
I'm going to call Doug if necessary.
Yeah, I want to see Mr. Eller out there, carrying his office. I want a picture of that when I see him.
Group photo. Okay, any other questions or comments?
No, I just think it's an excellent idea.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 3B, State Historical Fund Grant Application, La Raza Park, Tortilla Flats Neighborhood, National Historic District nomination, and Mr. Odenjor.
Morning, council. As you see in your packet today, the Community Development Department is moving forward with a grant application pending your approval to seek to get a grant to designate the La Raza and Tortilla Flats Neighborhood as a National Historic District. There's a long history of the city and Tortilla Flats, and this is kind of the culmination of a lot of that, and will continue to build that up as well. This kind of came out of the Historical Contact Survey that we also sought a grant for back in 2022, 2021. So after a long engagement with the neighborhood, it was the residents, current and former, said, you know, we'd like to pursue this historic nomination process. And so we went to History Colorado, see what kind of grants that they offered. This main grant was an option. It is competitive, but it's, there's a couple of different tiers, but this is kind of the lower scale. But I think we have a very solid application moving forward, and it will not cost the city anything. There's no financial obligations. We have no MASH required for this one, and you'll actually be seeing this tomorrow at regular City Council due to deadlines.
I think this is a really important thing for the community. I think that I attended the last public meeting with you guys at MADA, and the thing that struck me the most, I believe, was the, what appeared to be the consensus of opinion from the entire neighborhood and those from the, other places in the city that attended. So I think this is an outstanding and worthwhile project, and I think you will have total support from this council for anything you think we could or should be doing to help move this process along.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I'm currently on the MADA board, just for in case if this comes up at the council meeting, and I'm not sure that it's even a conflict of interest, but I just wanted to make everybody aware that I am currently on MADA's board.
I'll let legal counsel comment on that, but I don't think that disqualifies you.
I wouldn't say so. It's, the question is whether or not your membership on that MADA board would give rise to an appearance of impropriety for the vote. We don't vote in this session, so this is fine in this circumstance. I don't anticipate it would. So that's my initial take.
Thank you.
One thing I would like to kind of express with a record is one of the benefits, some of the benefits of this designation. Could you elaborate a little bit on that for the public?
It's actually something that was alluded to by Mr. Horn earlier as you were interviewing him. Having a designation like this would open up some more opportunities for grants, for tax credits, things of that nature, as well as just recognition and really bringing light to what happened in Montrose, and in particular, letting people know and helping the public, both local and national, international, know the contributions that this neighborhood has contributed to the development of Montrose and the region, frankly. And so with this grant, we hope to get through the nomination process, and we'll see if that actually will allow us to become a historically designated neighborhood.
I think the benefit of having the availability of funds for renovation and restoration, and the availability of grants through that designation make it worth every bit of time we spend on it. Thank you.
What is your guess, and I'm sure it's probably just a guess, but from now until potential designation, what period of time are we looking at?
Once, and if we do get this grant funding, the nomination process will probably take about 18, 24 months. It's, it's a long process. You're working with the National Park Service to go through this, and there are cycles and reviews and things like that. So this could be kind of a little bit of a longer process, unfortunately, but that's the nature of the beast of this.
Well, what little power we have as a council to push things along at the federal level, we'll be happy to exercise.
Appreciate that, absolutely.
Well, yeah, I didn't want to go there. Anything else, council, on this? Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Item 3C, EPA Brownfield Cleanup Grant Application, Bullock Power Plant, and Mr. Odenjor again.
Thank you as well. So as you see before you, the Community Development Department would also like to go for the big one. This is a really big cleanup application for the Bullock Power Plant, formerly known as the Montrose Steam Electric Plant. I think that's the coolest name. But what we're seeing, and give you a little bit of the history, obviously, a lot of you know about this plant and the remediation efforts that need to go into it. We were able to get a service grant from, call it a department of Health and Environment, Public Health and Environment, and using their consultants to kind of really get an idea of what we're up against. A lot of work had been done through various EPA grants and other things to get good environmental assessments on this plant. To finally finish out the characterization, as well as getting a structural assessment and some real viable numbers of what it would take to remediate this entire site. That happened earlier this year. The numbers came back right about $2 million. Mostly that is for asbestos cleanup. Majority of the work will be done remediating asbestos inside, as well as some that's come outside as well. We think those numbers are pretty good. So with that, I need, I need your approval to go for this grant. And the, the good part is that prior to the bipartisan infrastructure law that, that was recently passed, you know, $500,000 was kind of the cap, and we had tried to go for that back in 2021 timeframe. Now, we can do a couple of different tiers, and they've made a much larger ask that you can go for cleanups. We're kind of in the middle tier, trying to get, keep it under $2 million. That's probably the moderately competitive. There's more, there are larger asks, but they only anticipate maybe 18 awards nationwide for anything larger than that. So we think that with the $2 million, we can get most of what we need done, and if there's a little after, we could come to you for, or other CDPHG grants and things of that nature. So with that, I'll open it up for your
This doesn't require any matching funds or any
And that's the other thing. There is no matching funds due to this bipartisan infrastructure law. Last time it went around, it would have been a 20% match on a general basis.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited to see this moving forward. We've been working on this project for the last few years, and we've been, it's a long, elaborate, laborious process. And we're just really excited to see it keep on rolling, because we have a vision of revitalizing that area. And the one thing that I did see in the report that I like to point out is that even though the, when it shifted over to coal, that we do have some fly ash contamination. It is localized and contained. It did not impact water supplies.
Yes.
Which also makes it a lot easier cleanup.
100%, very much so, and Scott could even talk to that, too. But yeah, thankfully, through all the assessments, we've been able to find that, that there's been no groundwater or anything that's been impacted. Even being right next to the Uncompartmentary River there, there's been no leakage of any kind that we, we've seen in the assessments, and all that is contained. And what they've told us is that we can just cap it with vegetative covering, make it just kind of a park-like setting, because it's not stable enough for anything other than that at this point. But yeah, it'll be a lot easier mitigation, for sure.
That's great.
Didn't, didn't we do some brownfield on that once before? Just a full, full assessment.
Phase one and a phase two?
It would, yeah, I mean, phase two, probably even like, like it was a, I mean, full-blown, full-blown characterization study, and then they just had a couple of holes and they dated it this recent one.
Yep.
And whatever we do, we are not putting a zip line from the top of the building across the river for the city manager.
You sure about that?
Possibly.
Maybe not.
Is it, is it?
It's interesting that this should come up. As of recently, I've had several people ask It's interesting that this should come up. As of recently, I've had several people ask me about this and also make comments of what it could be used for, and the community input, and I'm sitting there thinking, gee, whiz. We need to come up with something, and lo and behold, on the work session today, it's here. So there will be opportunity perhaps for the community to get involved later on as to what the exact uses for it can be used in.
And, and the uses would be zero if we don't move forward on it.
Clean it up and.
If we own it, we've got to own it up to it. We've got to clean it up, right? And having somebody else pay for it, it's really nice, especially at this price of $2 million.
Absolutely. And to, to Ed's point, there will be at least one public input session prior to the application requirement, and also something that I really want to see as well. So we'll have that hopefully out here soon and with the date designated. So when I have that, I'll let you all know. You can attend and let your constituents know as well.
When would you expect notification on this one?
As far as?
If we were to be awarded?
Awarding will happen probably about March, April timeframe. It takes a good long while for them to, to go through these applications. So the application deadline is November 14th, so coming up pretty quickly, and the public meeting will happen prior to October 30th.
And once it's awarded, are the funds immediately available or is that a timeframe?
Unfortunately, not right, not exactly immediate. What usually happens is between us, the project team, CDPHG at the state, and EPA finalize the mediation plans, remediation plans, and finalize contract and scope of work that's required, and then the funds will then be available, probably in the fall, likely, is when work will start.
Well, thank you again for a great project.
Yeah, we're excited about it.
Any further comment or questions on this one? If not, we will move on to item 3B, Woodgate, East Oak Grove Roundabout and Backage Road Project Award. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. That is trademark. See if we can get it to work. Totally get it to work. Today is my day for technology. All right. So you guys are pretty familiar with the project since we've talked about through all the development agreement and stuff over the years, so I'll give a, just a really quick overview of the latest and greatest. So obviously, with the Woodgate realignment, the intent was to have a roundabout here all along. At the time, we didn't have the property necessary to purchase that, plus we were also under timeline constraints with the land acquisition for the Woodgate realignment itself. So we always knew this was going to be a future project. Fast forward to today, we have a landowner that's, was excited to work with us. We've entered into a development agreement. They've also sold the land and closed on for the All Points Transit Site to the northeast. And then kind of larger picture, we're also working on the Backage Road from Woodgate up to Encanto. This project will take it here just to the north end, shown on this figure, the first part of the Backage Road, which essentially opens up all of the access to the All Points Transit Center Site and future kind of multifamily, which is being eyed to the east of here. But if you remember, we did secure the right-of-way easement to go all the way up to Encanto, which will probably be a 2026 start on that project. So part, or always, projects are always part one of ten. You know, there's, there's just systematically kind of working through, getting through our comp plan and, and our long-range transportation plan. So this roundabout is unique. So we're getting a lot of questions about that red roof house there on the northwest corner, so that is being relocated. We thought the house mover wanted to do it early this spring, but they got really busy, and so it's kind of sad ever since. We got all the abatement done. That's why it's so ugly right now, because the siding was stripped off. But they do plan to start. They said they'll have it out by Thanksgiving.
Good year.
So do we, do we own that proper?
We own a quarter of the garage. It's kind of unique. Yeah, so as part of the land agreement, it created the framework for them to relocate the house. The house is technically theirs. The remaining lot to the northwest is theirs. We own just the right-of-way, which takes up a part of the garage. And so that's why it, it got deemed, you know, no economic use, no economic remainder, obviously. You can't have a garage going through a house. And they, through the agreement, agreed to, to either, or they were going to relocate it, and if they were going to relocate it, we would have demolished it. But we don't want to see a house come out of our market, so we've been very patient in waiting and getting it for it to get relocated.
Can, can I ask a, probably a really stupid question?
Yeah.
With my background in traffic engineering, which is none, it looks to me when you come out through the roundabout and it just kind of shoots into the Walgreens parking lot, that's not an issue, obviously, right?
With roundabouts, it's, so in a perfect world, we would get all driveways as far away from, you know, up to a couple, three, four hundred feet. This is close enough that it's, or far enough away that it's, it's not a terrible concern for us. So this will all get restriped as joint two-way left turn lanes right here, because there's always kind of confusion between the bank and its primary access and Walgreens. It's a congested corridor. The majority of the traffic is, a good chunk of what's coming down from the east is going south on Woodgate, so they're avoiding Townsend. They'll use this roundabout to do that, account, support that. So no access near a driveway is perfect. That being said, there are, even the mountain towns in, in Colorado, there are gas stations on roundabouts on the quadrant. So it can be done, and it's just one more thing to yield to. But definitely within the realm of, of normal and, and not unsafe by any means.
Maybe the one so stupid a question.
That's a good question.
And actually, I, I do have another question, and actually, mine's an actually really smart question to say in.
We'll wait to see.
On the north side of that, where we're ending the Backage Road, our current construction, we had talked about doing an access point into the Penn Center Mall off of that between the, between the two larger buildings where the Office Depot and stuff is and the, the oil change. I don't see that on here. And I'm just kind of curious, is that something that we are planning on later, or is that something that we would incorporate into this section of the project?
Yep. So the primary access is moved to right here, and the reason for that was grade. So there's grade separation here. We have a loading dock in some maneuvering area that to put a ramp would warp, actually warp the semi trucks trying to get into the loading dock. So we can't change the grade right here because of the loading dock for the north end of the Office Depot Building, or the south end, sorry. And so grade-wise, this is the place that works out. So the owner, actually, they own both of these, so they intend to make this their common entrance to go between the two while still maintaining and not interrupting the truck traffic maneuvering for the loading dock.
So the access would be on the back of that angular section.
Yeah, so this, so this is, we'll be constructing this curb turn to serve as the joint access point for these two lots. The owner of the Penn Mall there plans to kind of reconfigure and revamp it eventually to kind of center towards the front and make this more of a centered development right here, pointing towards the roundabout. And there'll be no access here because grade-wise, you couldn't get an access and actually make it work vertically.
Gotcha.
Was the issue there. So, yeah, we intended to initially, but as we got into design, between the grades and the All Point Site and everything, making all the utilities work.
But we will still have that access point into the Penn Center Mall, allowing the traffic from that mall into the roundabout, therefore access to the light.
Once.
Eventually.
Once it's punched through, yes. The, the challenge now is this interim situation. We don't want every residential and every Murdochs, customers coming through this mall, snaking through a private parking lot to get to a public street. So it will not have its, its Backage Road benefit until it connects up, connects up to Encanto. And that's by design, because you can imagine, you know, 500 vehicles a day going past all those crosswalks in front of the stores, not, and on private par, property, not a good thing. So we're trying to avoid that. You know, they can certainly open it up if they want to, but we're not doing it as part of our project.
Very good. Thank you.
That was a pretty smart question. On the south side of that.
It looks like there's two islands on that.
Yep. So this one's unique. This is our first lane and a half roundabout. So what you have is a really large turning movement. You know, what, Woodgate, the Woodgate realignment and Woodgate Road is essentially an extension of Hillcrest, because Hillcrest didn't go through the neighborhood at the time. People are trying to avoid Townsend, so between South Hillcrest and Woodgate realignment, it's more or less your first belt off of Townsend. There are lots that are coming downhill crest, or eventually even worse coming down, or even more volume coming down East Oak Grove once it punches through. They're looking to stay off of Townsend, so a good chunk of everyone coming down from the right side of the screen there. So coming down from the east are turning south onto Woodgate in the morning, so you got a big rush in the morning, and then you got a big return in the afternoon, all avoiding Townsend, which is exactly what it's designed to do. So because of that heavy turning movement, it warrants additional lanes, because that's where the, it was, it was, I think it was over like 60% are making that movement. And so because of all those additional volumes, it gets its own kind of dedicated left lane. So as you come in, as you come down, if you can see my cursor, it's kind of hard to see, but as you come down, if you're going on Woodgate, you'll go right here and come down, and so it'll more or less just be kind of a left turn lane. You'll see left turn lane signage here that kind of directs you into that lane. If you want to keep going straight or going, you know, All Points for the Backage Roads for their shopping, you would just go and go right around. So it's not as confusing of, you know, if you want to hang a left or, you know, cross, cross multiple openings and get into different lanes. It's, it's, it's our soiree into a two-lane roundabout without being a full two-lane roundabout. So it's, it's pretty straightforward that way, but it just adds a lot more capacity to the intersection for the long range, especially once, because we modeled this, you know, for once we've, you know, the area is experienced build-out, and we have East Oak Grove punched through to 6700 Road, because that's going to change a lot of the traffic patterns and bring a lot of volume to this.
And we have the, the necessary property to, to make this work adequately and not like squeeze everybody.
That was one of the things we had to wait for, was to get, make sure we had that property access to do.
And a nice part about this one is we had the advantage of designing it and then pursuing right-of-way, so we didn't have to take a, you know, over the, or get too far out ahead of ourselves as far as what we were thinking the right-of-way would need to be. We had the design, and then we fine-tuned the acquisition with the owner to, to meet the exact design, so. Yeah, so that worked out. And then so to answer your original question, so for northbound, because you have a large amount of those movements going right, you know, if you're going right turn, you kind of get your freeway, you still have to yield. But for those that are, you know, wanting to go left, they would go around this way. Yeah, yep. And, yeah, it's designed, I mean, it's all modern standards and designed for all of those volumes and, and more, you know, future growth.
We've had several questions lately about education on how to drive through a roundabout. And yet this one looks to me like it's got a whole new complexity, that this is going to take an educational.
Master's degree program.
To get up.
Roundabout 201.
If I'm going north on Woodgate, and how do I get through that thing? It's going to either be signage. Are you standing out there directing traffic?
The little old lady that gets caught in it and can't get out?
Yeah, recognizing that, we, we added not a, not a, you know, board or a admirable amount of, of street signs, but we did add some additional pavement markings, knowing, especially in the interim condition, to make it very obvious which way is what. Again, this is nothing out of the ordinary for roundabouts anywhere, just getting people up to speed.
It's new for Montrose.
Incremental change, new for Montrose. So, you know, we, we've, you know, the youth council have done the videos and stuff, and you either know how to drive them or if you don't, and if they, if they, well, I mean, if they're, my take is, if you don't know how to drive a roundabout, you're going to be like, well, I'm going to watch a video, and now I'm going to know, you know. I don't think we had much viewership of those. Nobody really ever talked about those changing their behavior. You know, there's, there's a learning element, trying to make this, the streets as forgiving as possible in our design with extra signage and things of that sort to just help that transition. But again, that's nothing by any means out of the ordinary that they'll experience traveling in any, if they've ever left Montrose.
Well, paint on the pavement definitely helps me more than signage.
Yep, and that's what the extras are. It's all the signage is typical above. There's additional lane markings on all the approaches.
Because currently I.
Be careful, you're going to paint markings in a second.
We'll have Judy Anne do the video for this one, okay?
Okay. I'll do it on my bike.
Markings are pretty important on those things, because it's interesting how the speed limit sign says 15, but yet some people are almost flying into those things, maybe another sign a little further out that says.
Still 15.
Still 15. Yeah, people drive what the thing tells them. But yeah, to the pavement marking side, to the, you know, we use thermoplastic, which have a lot longer life, and those you'll see, you've seen, they get grounded and put back in pretty routinely, because, yeah, they're, the signage is really important at the roundabouts. And, you know, everyone got it excited or done talking about the old roundabouts, so this is the next new thing. So Facebook will have, I mean, we're, this should give them plenty to talk about for.
What's this?
The one thing I've heard a lot of comment on was that because this construction is going to start pushing traffic back up through Vista San Juan.
Yep.
That the request was that we do a little bit better signage education and perhaps utilize our, our flashing red and blue traffic signs in that neighborhood.
Yep.
Because the amount of increase in traffic, that even though it's not a designated alternate route.
Yes, short cutting is a concern. Yep, so maybe I'll, yeah, use that as a segue to dive into, into the detour. So as we talked about the last couple of meetings, the Ogden Road is going to be closed first because of the bridge replacement. So none of the work at the intersection, within the intersection itself, will take place until Ogden is open, because Ogden will become the detour for the Woodgate Roundabout. You may see some work start on the north end and some utility work outside of the intersection, but the intersection itself will not be closed until March of '25, once Ogden is done, unless something changes with the permitting there that we may move, have to move some projects around. But the detours are up to the main roads, and so if you zoom in on this, you can kind of see, but we have what we call soft closures, which are closures that say, you know, road closed, local traffic only, to try and remind people up ahead that there's, there's the closure, and they don't, we don't want them to get trapped up there. But also, we want to encourage them as much as possible to use the minor arteries and not shortcut through neighborhoods. That being said, the roads are open, the rights of way, people will still use them. So the biggest concern of this one, the same concern when we did the Woodgate realignment, is the tendency for people to shortcut through Vista San Juan instead of, especially in this case, going all the way out to East Oak Grove and Ogden. If they come downhill crest, their natural tendency will be to shortcut through Vista San Juan here. You know, we'll have additional signage kind of creating soft closures needed to kind of just discourage some. Those don't discourage all. It's hard. You make it good enough that an emergency vehicle can get through or the local residents can get through, and all of a sudden, everybody's coming through. But additional radar trailers, flashing radar trailers, flashing speed signs on those streets, and having those deployed right off the bat. We're, we're counting on it here. It'll be, I mean, the whole kind of premise for the Woodgate realignment and even this intersection project was giving faster routes, making routes that are faster than going through the neighborhood. And so this, this helps with the long-range goal of accomplishing that, but in the interim, during the closure, we're going to be dealing with those short cutting in, and people feel a sense of lost, of lost time, so they actually speed, are more prone to speed through there. There'll be enforcement actions of it, or enforcement action associated with keeping that the whole duration. It's something that we don't just one and done. It's something we kind of work through. We worked through it on the Niagara Roundabout as well. And admittedly, there's, we try and tamp it down and, and control and have enforcement and get the signage and all these things and the radar trailers. But there's still people that don't drive respectably. Admittedly, it's, it's painful, and we can't be there all the time, but, you know, we're going to try everything we can to, to limit that.
Because I asked a question, Siliva. No, the other aspect about, and, and just kind of for the public record, that one of the reasons that, the other ask was that we put in the rumble strips and put in speed bumps, and the reason we don't do that is because of vehicle damage and vehicle noise in the neighborhood actually seems to outweigh the positive benefits of putting those speed bumps in. And so that's one of the reasons that we don't utilize that very much in those environments on those short cutting routes.
Yep, yep. And there's different camps on that, but yeah, the, the benefit is marginal at best by the time you figure in the noise, and then people generally accelerate in between to make up for what that is slowed down for. So then you get more erratic driving, more road rage, things of that sort that, you know, just keep our presence, keep the radar signs, do everything we can to try and keep as traffic as calm as possible through there.
And I think communication with this particular project is going to be key for, for everybody to make sure that they know where, when, how to negotiate the different roads and, and bypasses.
And follow up on that, just for public information, would, when would you anticipate the opening of this roundabout?
I think it's September, I think is the current contract date. Let's see, open in September, yep.
Twenty-five.
March to September, yep.
And one of the other thing I wanted to kind of mention is that we are still pursuing on the west side of Townsend. We're still pursuing our project over there to. We're still pursuing our project over there to make, realign and straighten out that intersection as well.
Yep.
So, that people are aware that we are aware of the problem. We know what happens. It's my favorite intersection in all of Montrose.
That could happen while you're still on council.
It could. I'm hoping, I'm hoping, I'm praying.
Yeah, we're working through a two ninety-nine process with the federal government, which is their fancy word for a right of way or permit for a public entity. So, hopeful. We got the right person, we have the right form going their way. So, they, they said expect one to two years.
Yeah, we're working on it. Yeah, we're aware.
Yeah, and the nice part is, yeah, they would grant it, the right of way needed to, to make that intersection wider. We got to do some modifications alongside their building and some utility work, but it's not, we don't have to be purchasing it from the federal government, which is great.
Great. Any other questions or comments on this?
In, in looking at that roundabout, the way it's laid out, is it possible to do that in like two phases, do a north half and a south half, so you would have traffic that could flow through there on one half or the other?
It would add probably at least fifty percent to your cost, probably add about a million and a half if you were to do that. And then, and then the time, yes, you might, you, they might be able to do it in a season. We haven't evaluated that. We've, we've made those evaluations in the past and tried to, you know, look at the incremental costs, is it worth the, the loss? We have a good viable detour route, you know, if we can get people to follow it. And so, we've, we've not felt those were worth the expenditure because it's, it's serious. It's in the millions to, to do them like that. And some cities do them that way because they have to. With enough money, you do anything. But, you know, you got utilities traversing in all directions and stuff. It really complicates the construction that your price goes, goes way up. Then, just real quick, the bidding. So, got four bids. Last, last meeting, we were talking about the importance of keeping our contracting pool intact and happy. This is a great example of that. So, you can see a pretty significant spread between three point six and three point zero eight for this. K and D's a reputable contractor. They actually built the Miami Hillcrest Roundabout. So, full confidence in their abilities to do this work and an ex, at an excellent price. And then, as is typical, we have our survey support contract and then we pay for our street lighting from D M A directly. So, that's, those three are what make up the three point two two. We budgeted around four for this project. That was really just using straight Niagara numbers, so not overly conservative. From when these estimates were originally developed, the product scope got a little more simplified, but I, and you can see a really aggressive bid, they wanted it. So, if, you know, if you, if you were to go to the, you know, the second clustering at the three point six, when you add in the other costs, we're in the neighborhood of that four. So, we just had a really good bid and maybe, just maybe, the market's starting to turn in, in our favor in this regard. So, we don't want to count any chickens yet, but we'll take every one we can get because the next one will probably come over, you know. So, we were just talking to Bill and Chan, he said, don't give it away yet because, you know, we have a long ways to go, there's a lot of projects to go. So, I think it'll, it always does, all kind of average out in some form. But, we're excited to report that significant of an underage, is that a word, to, to start the, start the budget year. And then, as a reminder, yeah, we had some money budgeted in twenty-four, we won't really use. We might use some of that for like initial mode, but for the most part, that got reallocated to the Ogden Bridge project. So, everything will be budgeted independently in twenty-five for the bulk of this project.
That's good.
And as we all know, that we don't have a true understanding of what is underneath until we start digging.
Yeah, this one we do, I think. So, we have dug up every quadrant, or three of the four quadrants of this intersection. And the nice part is, and actually, that's, so we all have, you know, you can, just relatively speaking, we have a larger roundabout and a back of road and we're still the same price as the Niagara Roundabout because we don't have all that utility work. So, there's no, we're adding some water and sewer to open up the northern basin, but everything that was constructed previously, with the exception of some comm cabinets that just need to get moved fifty feet and they're really straightforward, just a trench. Nothing is in conflict and doesn't have to be relocated because we knew all this was coming with our old previous designs. So, everything under the road is more or less modern infrastructure and then actually all the road base and all that beneath the two footprints will also be able to be, don't even have to go into it, our grade is changing up slightly. And so, we're able to just kind of add right on to the top, not have to lose those previous investments.
Which is excellent.
Which is good. We hope.
So, this is the same contractor that's going to do the Ogden Bridge?
Correct.
Any conflicts there with their timelines and being able to move from one project to the other?
That's a great advantage for us, actually, because if something were to change on one or the other, no one can claim a, use the other as a basis for a claim. They would just move their own schedule around because they're able to, to make it work. So, they intend to just go straight from one right to the other. And then, again, if something were to go awry with the permitting or procurement or something and we needed to keep them busy on one job while we're waiting on another, this gives them the ability to kind of float between the two. So, yeah, that was, that is a good advantage for us, I think, and for them, to be on both.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
The, excuse me, next item is under general city council discussion and we have one item on the agenda and that's the two thousand and twenty-five funding for Region Ten. And I believe we have a representative from Region Ten, please come up here. Good morning and thank you for sitting through this and waiting on us.
No problem, no problem.
But, would you introduce yourself, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Brian Buller. I've worked in healthcare, aging services and human services and the business side for twenty-five to thirty years. And so, I just recently started about five, six weeks ago with Region Ten. I was excited to be, to replace Eva Beach. She's been working for eleven years and was a fantastic advocate for aging and services in this area. So, excited to be here, so.
Well, we're glad to have you here. I think what I'm going to do, Mayor Pro Tim Frank, if I might, since you're our representative to Region Ten and you raised this issue a couple of weeks ago, would you like to kind of set the, set the stage for the discussion?
Excellent, thank you. This last legislative session during the, the long bill, which is the funding bill for a lot of our programs along the state agencies, that they actually reduced our funding for our area agency on aging, or the triple A, in such a significant way that it directly impacted the ability of Region Ten and a number of the other area agencies on aging to be able to actually continue to fund their jobs that they do. And a lot of those jobs are critical to keeping seniors and elders in our, in their homes and keeping health and housekeeping services available to them, as well as providing meal services. And because of the shortfall, it's been directly impacting a lot of the programs that Region Ten does in Montrose. And I think that was a great opportunity for our discussion on our ability as a city to be able to continue to support our senior citizens and our elder population and keep them in their own homes, which is, I think, a great benefit both emotionally, financially, and from a security standpoint. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Brian to go ahead and give us a lot more elaboration on what that means and how we can possibly help.
That'd be great. Just a, a quick overview of what Region Ten does locally, particularly for city of, of Montrose. The services we have here include personal care and homemakers that go into their home and, and help with homemaking. Three hours, typically three to six hours a month is approved for homemakers. Personal care is similar type of hours that go in. We also have information and assistance and, and home-delivered meals. These are the, people call them meals on wheels, but those are the meals that are taken directly to people's homes. And then, we also have what we call caregiver respite and you guys are familiar with transportation that we, we help fund. We've had to cut that too. But, the, in talking about this, to see what would be most important, I, I, we believe to Montrose, we were looking at the mills. The mills by far is, that's where we're, we're sure, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollar shortfall in budget that we've left open, hoping to be able to fill it. We're, we're taking efforts in multiple ways to look at other grant, grants that are offered in Colorado. There's the several foundations we're looking at and Daniel's fund. So, we hope to be able to fill some of these, these areas with that shortfall. But, back to the mills, I, why are mills so important? Mills are important because there's a statistics I was looking up, in hospitalization, seventy to ninety percent of elderly are there more than likely for malnutrition. It's like, all it takes is if, nutrition's very important. It's like, my grandma was one that, that would, her daily meal was basically, she'd get up, have toast, banana and a coffee every morning. And so, that's what she did all the time. We tried to get her to eat more, but she didn't always eat more. And ultimately, one of the things that got her was potassium. She had to, that's, she was low on potassium and it caused all these other effects. And, and I've worked in adult protection locally for ten years, so I'm very familiar with this whole area. And, and with people in this area, they more than likely, it was the nutrition that was the base, nutrition of all of us. We need food, you know? And if you're not getting food, then all, everything else doesn't work. Your mind doesn't work, you're, you know, out there socializing and, and meeting people. So, as we looked at this, we have, we, we used to fund, there's several sources of, of where we fund the mills. Shepherd's Hand helps us with the mills. It's like, these aren't mills for the homeless, these are, they use the kitchen first to make a mill, fifty mills currently, three times a week. We used to have it five times a week. That would be much more, that'd be better for the community to have five mills a week. I've seen it as my, when I was in, again, adult protective services, even getting one mill, good meal a, a day helped people stay in their homes. That was like the basis. If they, if they were eating, then you could take care of the homemaking, then you could take care of, of, of personal care. But, if they weren't eating right, they would, they would go down so quickly, quickly. So, what we're proposing, in talking with Michelle and us, we would, our budget, we, we used to do, like I said, five mills a week. If we had to meet, to even get back up to, to that locally, it's like, and Shepherd's Hand, that's eighteen thousand. And then, in mom's mills, just to give you an idea, mom's mills are the mills that, they're, they're not frozen mills, they're fresh mills. They come in, in groups of ten and you get them two weeks at a time. And they last for two weeks and they're very nutritious and they meet all the government F D guidelines. So, those only cost nine, nine dollars and fifty cents per mill and we're able to get those out to quite a few people here in, in the city of Montrose. That costs, just an example, of currently fifty mills with a monthly cost of nine thousand and four, and four, four hundred and ninety dollars or annual cost of a hundred and thirteen thousand to ten people. That's tw- twenty mills a month with two deliveries a month. So, these are the type of things, they're fairly simple things, but they, they make the difference. And that, that's what, if, if we were to, to look at anything, helping us with, to either to at least meet the budget shortfall that we have, because currently, we haven't even met the three mills a week that we have for the, currently, that's not fully budgeted right now. And so, even to get back up to the five would be more. And so, we really don't know what particular to, to ask for, but those are the numbers that we wanted to, to throw out there, that the eighteen thousand would be, would at least meet our, our budget shortfall and, and likely be able to help us offer five mills a week to the local area.
As a, as a participant in the Mills and Wheels program, I've had the experience of meeting some of these people that actually need the services. And me, I'm kind of reluctant to just provide people with stuff. And I realized that when you go to someone's house and they answer the door in a wheelchair with no legs and you sit there and you look at that and they say, thank you very much and they, they have these meals. And recently, my wife and I, who were part of the distributions, were cut because we were one of the day's cut. And not speaking for my wife, but I can tell you, she really misses it. And as a matter of fact, one of her deliveries, she from time to time goes over there and checks on them and, and does grocery shopping for her. So, there is a need out there and I'd like to see us do what we can to help.
You made a great point too. It's not just, so here's, the one level is providing the food and nutrition. It's also the socialization, just having somebody to check on them once, you know, four or five times a week helps a lot. Many times, there's been incidents when you check on somebody, they're not answering, they're usually there, then you have, and, and they're not there the next day, then eventually you have a welfare check and there's something happening with them. They had a fall or something. So, this, the socialization, all of this is important. These, I call it the small and simple things that, that keep a community going, both the food and the connection and, and checking on each other. So, and, and it helps the people delivering the mills too. It, it's, it's part of serving, it's like a lot of the, the volunteers that do this, this is one of the things they feel like they can give back. They're, they're in their own position where they don't have a lot of resources themselves, but this is something that makes them feel a part of our, our community. And, and I think that's, it's, it, it's all about being alive. It's like, if you're, if you're just receiving something, that's one thing, but if you, you can both receive something and then give something to somebody else, take it, take somebody a mail, that helps them. That helps them have that spark to, to continue and to contribute to others. So, these are the things, these are the small things that, and if you look at the budget as far as what does it cost once a person gets into a hospital or, or, you know, then your costs go up tremendously. What if they go to the nursing home? Average nursing home, say, is eight thousand five hundred dollars for the state of Colorado right now. And so, you look at the minimal cost that we're doing weekly to keep a, a person in their home compared to, once they, once they break down completely, it's, then the numbers just blow up at that point and then, so.
Let me ask a question if I might. First of all, a comment, I, I think the city of Montrose has a history of always stepping up to the plate and when there are critical needs and I don't view this as being any different. I guess a concern I have, and I don't know that anybody has the answer to it, but is, this is a short-term critical need, but what does the future look like for funding and how is that going to be addressed?
And that's a great question. That's something I would encourage you as a city council and others, if you have any, you have, like I said, the ability to, to raise it up to higher levels. The last five years has been flat funding by both the federal and, and the state for aging services. It's just not, and if, if you look at that with inflation going up, with increased demand, with baby boomers coming, it's like, for that to be flat funding, where, the question is where is the money going if, if, if it's, if we're not taking care of our aging? So, what we're doing is, is looking at these other ways. We feel there's, it, it's going to have to be these, a community in, in smaller ways of, of keeping funding. We, we are looking at a, not just, we're not relying anymore just on the federal government or on, on state government. We feel like we're looking to other sources and, and we are having, we think, some very good possibilities out there. And, and I think it's going to be a process that the, the answer is, we don't have the answers right now. And I think that's, it's, it's really the local people are going to have to figure out for each community, how do we take care of our own?
I think another answer to that also is that during the budgeting process, there's a lot of opportunities to testify on behalf of the funding agencies and Region Ten has been very good about sending out those notifications about when hearings are and the availability and ability of local elected officials, as well as general citizens, to testify on behalf of better funding for our senior programs. And so, there's, that, that opportunity as well. So, it's a multi-pronged attack and we all have to take part because if we don't take care of our seniors, what good are we?
Yeah, we're all going to be there one day, we're all already there, there in some. Yeah. So, yep.
Well, I think this is a, not only something that we need to address as a short-term critical need, but it kind of opens our eyes up to what we probably need to be doing going forward and how we're going to work within the community and with state and that's to, to address the issue, so.
And let us not forget, these are local taxpayers that we're helping support.
I want to thank you for having us too and for asking us here. That was, we were looking and taking care of it and just to hear that you're interested, it's very, we appreciate it very much, so.
Well, thank you for coming. Any further questions or comments from the council?
Could you please tell me now how much we fund Region Ten annually this, currently?
Some of it is our, some of it is just our annual assessment to be a participant in Region Ten, but that is a multi-pronged use for Region Ten because we also have the S, the small business assistance programs, we have the small business loan programs, education programs. There's, so we're not just utilizing. education programs, there is, so we're not just utilizing that funding for that specific triple A purpose. So it's a pretty broad, broad utilization.
Yeah.
I believe our dues for twenty twenty-five are estimated to be twenty-four thousand dollars to Region Ten, just as Mayor Frank said, for our membership, which goes to support a variety of programs at Region Ten.
That was, Michelle said that was one place, if you wanted to look at dues, just increasing your dues voluntarily would, would might help in that, that aspect.
In the long?
In the long, in both.
In the long term, that will be a, a better solution, but I think in the short term, I think we, I would still like to further this conversation.
How are, how are dues determined and calculated?
They're calculated based on a number of different factors, primary is population.
Population, and, and city of Montrose is one of the biggest, as far as Region Ten and the six counties, it's like, obviously, city of Montrose is the biggest city that we support, so.
Right.
And the biggest shareholder, that's why we're offices next door and we're right here.
And it's also parsed out also by services. So the number of different services that we're providing, education programs, economic assistance programs. So it's a kind of a complex equation, but it's a answerable question if you really want to dig into it.
Yeah, and if we want to dig into, Michelle said she could come and expound on that, we had talked about some of the dynamics of that and she is really the expert to talk more to that, but that was brought up, so.
So would council like to see this as an agenda item in two weeks?
Yes, please.
How do we have an agenda item? To have an agenda item, that we have to have a specific amount?
Well, we, we would need to decide that, yes.
So who's going to decide that?
Or, I mean, I, I think that the agenda item could, a consideration of additional emergency funding for, for this program, the triple A program, and then we can decide in the meeting, when we discuss it publicly again, what the amount ought to be. That's the way I could see it working.
And I would like to get a little bit more input back from city staff on what they feel and what Chaney feels are an appropriate amount for us to actually participate, because we might have an opportunity to participate a little bit deeper and more significantly than we think. But I want, I would like input from staff on that.
Well, yes, but not, but to be discussed at the future council meeting, right?
Right.
So if I'm hearing right, council is supportive of helping to fund this gap that Region Ten is experiencing in the area agency on aging, specifically with the meals portion. And so we could talk with Region Ten and learn more about what the entirety of that gap is, and then perhaps propose to council some options for how.
Based on our abilities and, and, but then have it as a, as an agenda item without a specific amount in the agenda, that that would be determined in a vote table at that point in time.
A range of options.
A range of options, no specific number in a motion, and you all would talk and learn more. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate it.
Is there any other city council discussion?
Just that I had the opportunity to go to the rodeo for the Colorado Professional Rodeo Association finals, and it was a really fun event and it was a well-attended, it was the pink out for breast cancer night, and I know Mr. Reese was there and we had a, a number of our city staff attended, and it was a great time. It was a lot of fun watching, a really great event.
Great.
Also, I think the Oktoberfest seemed to have been very successful also.
Something that I shared with, with Doug and I share with the rest of you is, they just came out with the Colorado, state of Colorado came out with the report of the impact on recreation on the entire state, but it's breaking down, broken down by regions. And it's truly amazing to see how much money recreationalists spend in western Colorado in the different areas, everything from hunting, fishing to ATVing to whatever, and the number of participants we have. And our numbers are pretty equal to the numbers for the front range. And yet, think how much bigger the front range population is than ours. So that was just interesting to me to say, you know, because we talk about how, when we interview new employees, they almost always say, the reason they're in Montrose is for the recreational activities, right? Well, I, I think we as a city need to remember that that kind of makes our bread and butter, too. That's why tourists come here and why we want to live here, is recreation.
Does, does that report have other years or is it just, it just did one recently for, or as a multi-year, so we could look at perhaps what, what it was last year and the year before? Yeah, to see what it might be trending.
I would be glad to send you all that data, Ed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will email it to you.
Staff comments? Silence is golden. So I guess I'll end the session with a question. When was the last time we met on a Monday where you could say both the Buffalos and the Broncos won?
My one point.
Hey, a point's a point.
My point's a point.
Okay, we'll stand and turn. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming. We'll take about a five-minute break.